We're a little late on the meeting because we have a little bit of a quorum issue. We still need nine more people and I don't know if you folks have cell phones with you or maybe people at home that could get in the car and call on them, but if you can kind of try to pull that one off, it would be appreciated. Good evening. We've reached a quorum. So, I welcome everyone here to the Oxford Annual Town Meeting, May 2nd, 2007. My name is Mark Burghadanti. I'm the Town Moderator and next to me is Attorney General Charles Proctor, Deputy Moderator. And I'm declaring the quorum and calling this meeting to order. At this point, I'd like to just identify the exit ways for evacuation in case of an emergency. You have the doors if you came in there and there are also exit ways back here on both sides. So, in the event of an emergency, those would be the ways for you to exit. At this time, I ask everyone to stand and what we'd like to do is say their pledge of Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like to ask everyone remain standing and just as a footnote here, please shut off your cell phones if they aren't already shut off. I'd like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of some of the community leaders who have passed since our last meeting and I have a list here. Donald Provential, CRO of Ways and Measures. Marian Brown, Council on Aging. Beatrice A. Germain, Office Assistant, Oxford Public Schools. Marie Anne Pierce, Election Worker. Cecilia T. Sad, Election Worker, Precinct 1. Election Worker, Precinct 3. Ursula T. Bedard, Election Worker, Precinct 1. Election Worker, Precinct 3. Philip E. Tellier, Civil Defense Police Officer. And Allison Spitz, School Teacher, Downtown Beautification Committee, Historical Commission, and Main Street Preservation Committee. I'd like to introduce the town officials. First, our Deputy Moderator, Attorney General Charles Proctor. Make seat. Up here on the stage, we have our Town Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, our Selectmen, our Town Council, we have our Town Manager, we have our Accounting Department. Down below, to the left of me, we have the Finance Committee. In the center, we have the School Committee and toward our right, we have the Planning Board. And just by way of information here, anyone who is not a registered voter in town should be sitting in this section and is not allowed to vote. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask our Town Clerk, Laurie Kelly, to read the announcements and postings for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to either of the constables of the Town of Oxford and the County of Worcester, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Oxford High School in said Oxford on Wednesday, the second day of May next, at seven o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act on the following articles. Annual directed to serve this warrant by posting up the tested copies thereof at the post office on the Plains, the post office in North Oxford, the post office in Rochdale, Memorial Hall, and Hubertot Steamer Number 2 in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Here are fail not and make do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of said meeting as before said, given under our hands since the 10th day of April in the year of our ward, 2007. Jenny L. Casey, Henry J. LaMontagne, Daniel K. Coonan, Susan M. Galant, John G. Sad, Selectmen of Oxford. A true copy attest, Albert M. Adams, Constable, dated April 12th, 2007. Worcester S.S., pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Oxford by posting up the tested copies of the same at the post office on the Plains, the post office in North Oxford, the post office in Rochdale, Memorial Hall, and Hubertot Steamer Number 2, seven days before the date of the meeting as within directed. Albert M. Adams, Constable of Oxford, April 12th, 2007.
Thank you. From an informational standpoint, you should have received packets as you checked in at the checker's desk and this information includes the Town Meeting Warrant booklet. Inside that booklet is a budget message from the Town Manager, a history, as well as a procedural overview for this Town Meeting, definitions of standard municipal terms, the revenue budget, as well as the 27 articles that are on tonight's warrant. You should also have received a handout explaining the articles in layman's terms, as well as the Town of Oxford Annual Report for the year 2006. What's going to happen here is when we get to the articles, I'm going to announce the article and read the description as it's been posted. Then I'll ask for a motion in a second. I'll ask for recommendations from the Finance Committee and/or the Planning Board if appropriate. This will open up the article for discussion. Once the articles, once the, everyone has had the opportunity to speak and I'll close the discussion and ask for the vote. I'll declare a vote and then move on to another article. I'd like to set just a few procedural guidelines for this meeting in order to simplify and organize this process. All questions and comments need to be made through the chair. When requesting to speak, please raise your hand so that I can properly recognize you. I will consider any interruptions to this procedure as out of order and you will not be recognized. Once recognized, please come down to the microphone in front. State your name and address, then make your comments and/or ask questions. At all times, however, you should refrain from comments that are defamatory or of a personal nature. People on the stage can use the microphones at their table. Please try not to be repetitive with your comments so that we're better able to bring new information into the discussion. For people who are physically unable to walk down to the front, we have a wireless microphone available for your use. Please state your request for the microphone once you have been recognized by the chair. The microphone will then be brought over to you so that you can speak. I ask that we not be abusive to this meeting tool and that only people who are unable to walk down to the front request it. Okay, that all being said, I'm going to start with the articles. Article number one, to hear the reports of any town officers or any committee or committees authorized at any formal meeting and to choose any committee or committees the town may think proper. Do we have any committee reports?
Robert Mattis, 394 Main Street, Oxford. Oxford Building Study Committee Report. It is somewhat repetitive, but hasn't changed much. That's a report, but I'll read it to the, into the minutes anyway. At the October 20, 2004 Special Town Meeting, voters authorized Town Moderator to appoint members to the Building, Police Building Study Committee. Appointed to the committee by Town Manager were Chief Noyes, Officer Hasset, George Capoli, Michael Vols, Steve Anis, Ray Hodgynick, and Robert Mattis. The committee held its first meeting February 5th, 2005. The committee has since reviewed in detail the Butler Bennett Existing Condition Valuation Report dated August 23rd, 2001. Visited the Oxford Police Department, reviews plans and drawings for towns that have new police stations, namely Auburn, Lister, and Charles. Also reviewed with the plans and drawings from the Dudley Police Department Municipal Complex. The committee is in agreement that the current police station has numerous overcrowding issues, ADA violations, and does not meet current Massachusetts Department of Health regulations pertaining to police station. The committee cannot recommend any course of action where cost estimates are received. It is, however, be the recommendation for the site, which would be led at 503 Main Street. Respectfully submitted, Robert Mattis, Chairman.
Okay, yes. Please state your name and address as well.
Tom Sullivan, 17 Chestnut Hill Road. This is the North Oxford Sewer Study Committee Report. The North Oxford Sewer Study Committee was created by Town Meeting vote. Members were appointed by the Selectmen to advise the Selectmen and the Town of Oxford how to best utilize the remainder of 100,000 gallons per day of sewer capacity the Town has contracted for with the Town of Auburn and the Upper Blackstone Sewer District. Sewer lines were installed from the high school, middle school complex down Main Street to the outer line and paid for as part of the school construction projects. First thing the committee had to do was determine the capacity that was available. Starting with 100,000 gallons per day minus the daily usage of the schools and residences connected along the lines, 41,706 gallons per day. That arrives at a subtotal of 58,294 gallons per day. We had to subtract from that capacity committed to be the September 2007 or the project's completion of the Ashworth Heights Project. If the developer does not meet the conditions of their approved plan, this capacity will revert to town for use. That committal amount is 46,420 gallons per day. The real capacity for use currently is 11,874 gallons per day. Next, we identified neighborhoods that could benefit from a sewer connection based on several criteria, including proximity to the main line or a pumping station, cost effectiveness of connecting the neighborhood to a sewer versus maintaining or replacing a septic system, as well as the environmental impacts. With the Town Ball, we charge areas on our high water tables, et cetera. Neighborhoods identified for further study included Beverly Street, Burbank Street, Chestnut Hill Road, Depot and Old Depot Roads, Maple Avenue. Next, we reviewed and surveyed the residents, who wanted sewers and at what cost. The committee learned about the engineering of sewer systems with engineers from Fay, Skopper, and Fondike Incorporated Engineering. We learned about the hydrology of sewer systems, gravity versus low pressure systems, and how the different neighborhoods could require either gravity or low pressure or a combination of both. We learned how much discharge in gallons per day each neighborhood being studied would require. We then looked at the town records showing what percentage of septic systems in the targeted neighborhoods have been repaired or replaced in the last 15 years. We took all the separate data and tried to rank the neighborhoods based on all the criteria and we would commit to make the following recommendation. The neighborhood that best fits all the criteria is Beverly Street. As the committee's further hopes that the remaining sewer capacity be utilized by existing homeowners in proximity to sewer line, and we hope a good success in Beverly Street will serve as a springboard to do the other areas survey when and if the Ashworth allotment is available for use. Respectfully submitted, the North Oxford Sewer Study Committee. John Flynn, Chairman, Thomas Sullivan, Vice Chairman, Ann S. Rossack, Member, Robert P. Parker, John J. O'Connor, Senior, Christopher D. Lanson. Thank you.
Ann, I know you've had your hand up over there. I'm sorry I missed it for us two times.
My name is Burke Duttatelli. I live at 53 Port Hill Road. I'm the Chairman of the Golf Course Municipality Feasibility Study Committee. We are a seven-member ad hoc committee formed by the Selectmen in November of 2006. The purpose of this committee is to analyze the town's right first refusal to purchase high-risk country dwell in North Oxford. Our committee has three main goals. Number one, we are performing a revenue analysis to determine the actual annual profit that the golf course will produce. Number two, we will also determine the cost of the town's bond to cover this purchase and compare this to the actual revenues that the course will produce. Number three, we will understand the cost of doing nothing. What is the increased burden for the town's resources if this project, a 300 potential housing unit project, goes forward? What will the impact of the schools, police, fire, and highway be to the town? The committee is an extremely functional, diverse, and hard-working group with many areas of expertise. We're also pursuing all avenues for additional funding through various state agencies. This effort is being spearheaded by our elected state representative, Paul Kudjelski-Webster. It is also strongly supported by our other two elected officials, Mr. Frost and Mr. Alisea. We've been meeting bi-weekly since November and we plan on providing our final recommendations and reports in time for the October Town Meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Article Two if there are no other committee reports. They're being done. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the stabilization account and appropriate a sum of money to the fiscal year 2008 debt service account or act thereon.
I move that the sum of $444,462 be transferred from the stabilization account and appropriated to the fiscal year 2008 debt service account.
Second. Recommendation to the Finance Committee.
What is the committee recommend?
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous. Article number three.
This is required a two-thirds vote. I think you probably should take either hand or standing.
I'm sorry, would you, would you like to come up to the microphone and please state your name and address?
Point of order, Brandyham, 55 Wether Road. This requires a two-thirds vote.
That's correct.
Now, you can't take a voice vote. You have to either have a standing vote or write a show of hand. How are you going to record a two-thirds vote?
I didn't hear any opposition. If there was no opposition, if it... Okay, I declare a two-thirds vote because it was unanimous. Okay, Article number three. For this article only, I will identify each category of the budget. If anyone has any questions, please state the word "hold" and I will separate that category from the main motion. Once we vote on the categories that are not in question, I will come back to the hold items so that we can discuss and vote on them each separately. Once we are in discussion, I'll ask the person who held this category to address the meeting. Thank you. Article number three, to determine what sums of money the town will raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate to the freight charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, by the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2007, or act thereon. Finance, or hold on, one moment, please. Moderator, $200. Selectmen, $69,100, uh, $69,180. Town Manager, $203,715. Finance Committee, $643. Finance Department, $1 million. Legal Service, $125,000.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, respect for the Finance Department total. Leave that amount at $1,334,139 and I wish to hold that item.
Legal Service total, $125,000. Personnel Board total, $4,000. Town Clerk total, $161,325. Land Management total, $112,717.
Hold.
Memorial Hall total, $160,266. Public Buildings total, $346,797. Police total, $1,620,181. EMC Fire CD total, $343,381.
Hold.
CRO of Ways total, $3,850. Animal Control total, $6,000. DPW total, $1,815,130.
Hold.
Municipal Utilities total, $340,000. Council on Aging total, $72,395.
Hold.
Youth Commission total, $798. Veteran Services total, $37,136. Library total, $445,802.
Hold.
Historical Commission total, $627. Celebrations total, $5,158. Debt Financing total, $1,637,538. What did I say, 39? I'm sorry about that. Retirement and Insurance total, $5,191,001. Sewer Enterprise total. Commission Center Enterprise total, Community Center Enterprise total.
Hold.
Water Enterprise total.
Hold.
School General, $13,373,983. School Bus Transportation, $920,485. School Community Services, $40,000. Medicaid Billing, $5,000. SWCRBCD, Bay Path Schools, $848,546.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the amounts of money set forth in the Finance Committee Recommendation column of the printed budget, except for the amounts of money for those items which have been set aside for discussion, be raised by taxation and appropriated for the several purposes therein itemized. Each item marked with an asterisk being considered a separate appropriation.
Second.
Recommendation to the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Any discussion? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $1,334,139 be raised by taxation and that said sum, together with the sum of $3,800, be transferred from the Community Development Account and appropriated for the Finance Department.
Second.
Okay, recommendation to the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Is there discussion? Comments, questions? Okay, if they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $112,717 be raised by taxation and that said sum, together with the sum of $90,000, be transferred from the Building Inspector Offset Receipts Account and appropriated for the Land Management Account and $12,000 be transferred from the Conservation Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account and appropriated for the Land Management Account and $1,188 be transferred from the Board of Health Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account and appropriated for the Land Management Account.
Second.
Recommendation to Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $342,381 be raised by taxation and that said sum, together with the sum of $525,000, be transferred from the Ambulance Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account and appropriated for the EMS Fire CD Accounts.
Second.
Recommendation to Finance Committee.
We recommend.
If they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $6,000 be raised by taxation and that $5,000 be transferred from the Dawgs Fund Revolving Account and $5,000 be transferred from the Cat Fund Revolving Account. Said sums to be appropriated for the Animal Control Account.
Second.
Recommendation to Finance Committee. Questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $1,815,130 be raised by taxation and that the sum of $3,500 be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, that the sum of $2,500 be transferred from the Sale of Cemetery Lots Reserve for Appropriation Account and appropriated for the DPW Account.
Second.
Recommendation to Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Questions, comments? If they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $72,395 be raised by taxation and that said sum, together with the sum of $3,000, be transferred from the Oxford Home for the Age People Trust Fund and the sum of $27,000 be transferred from the WRTA Reserve for Appropriation Account and appropriated for the Council on Aging Accounts.
Second.
Recommendation to the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $445,802 be raised by taxation and that said sum, together with the sum of $22,807, be transferred from the Library Estate Aid Account and be appropriated for the library accounts.
Second.
Recommendation to the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, carry your unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $120,293 be appropriated for the Sewer Enterprise Operational Budget for fiscal year 2008 and that by offsetting said appropriation by estimated receipts from the sewer user fees.
Second.
Recommendation to the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Questions, comments? If being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $575,17,000 be appropriated for the community center enterprise operational budget for fiscal year 2008, by offsetting said appropriation by estimated receipts from the community center user fees.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions, comments? From the audience, if being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $125,000 be transferred from the sale of real estate account, and together with the sum of $1,500 from water enterprise estimated receipts, be appropriated for the water enterprise operational budget for fiscal year 2008.
Second.
Uh, recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions, comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Okay, thank you. Article number four, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officials of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salary and compensation of the elected officials of the town be fixed at the following amounts for the fiscal year 2008: Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, eleven hundred dollars; four other selectmen at one thousand dollars each for a total of four thousand dollars; and the town moderator, two hundred dollars.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Uh, questions, comments? Yes, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Rentett is two eighty-four Main Street. Just curious, um, what would the school committee have to do to be considered for something like this? If we were to put it before, who would we, who would we go to?
I believe that's something in the charter. I'll defer that, though, to...
Well, the charter's up for review possibly also this evening, so it's just a question that we have.
Someone want to take a stab at that? I believe it's a charter issue.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, I don't believe that's relevant to the article. I move the article.
Okay.
I didn't hear what you said.
Um, I don't believe it's relevant to the article, and I would move the article, ma'am.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask for a vote on that. Is there, uh... Is there a second to move that article?
Second.
All right. Uh, this requires a majority vote, uh, to move the article forward for a vote with no further discussion. So, uh, what I'm gonna ask is for a vote on moving the article. All in favor of moving the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, article moves. Uh, now I'm going to, uh, ask for the vote on the article. Uh, all in favor of, uh, voting for article number four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries by majority. Article number five, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate sum of money for a reserve fund pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section six, for the fiscal year 2008, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $150,000 be transferred from the free cash account and appropriated for a reserve fund for fiscal year 2008.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay, discussion? Questions from the audience? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously this way. Article number six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to temporarily borrow a note or notes, or to make an inter-fund advance for available funds in anticipation of revenue from taxation, bonds, or grants, and to repay said sums within the current fiscal cycle or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article six be adopted as printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions from the audience? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article number seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate the sum of $137,799 to meet the state share of the cost for town road maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as State Highway Aid, Chapter one twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and six, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $137,799 be appropriated from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Highway Aid, Chapter one twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and six, account to meet the state share of the cost for the town road maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Comments from the population, public? Comments, questions? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund under the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, to which shall be credited all fees and receipts paid to the town pursuant to the regulations pertaining to cats. Said funds may be expanded by the Board of Selectmen for costs incurred for cat licensing as required by said bylaw, enforcement of said bylaw, and other expenses incurred in accordance with said bylaw. The total amount which may be expended from said fund in fiscal year 2008 is fifteen thousand dollars, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article eight be adopted as printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions from the public? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article number ten.
Nine.
Sorry about that. To see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, to which shall be credited all fees and receipts paid to the town pursuant to Chapter twenty-one of the Town of Oxford General Bylaws, Wiring Inspectors. Said funds may be expended by the Board of Selectmen for costs incurred for wire, wiring inspections as required by said bylaw, enforcement of said bylaw, and other expenses incurred in accordance with said bylaw. The total amount which may be expended from said fund in fiscal year 2008 is six thou, sixty thousand dollars, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, will that Article nine be adopted as printed?
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions from the public? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If being none, I'll, uh, they, carries unanimously. Article number ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund under the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, to which shall be credited all fees and receipts paid to the town pursuant to Chapter sixteen of the Town of Oxford General Bylaws, Board of Health. Said funds may be expended by the Board of Selectmen for costs incurred for plumbing inspections as required by said bylaw, enforcement of said bylaw, and other expenses incurred in accordance with said bylaw. The total amount which may be expended from said fund in fiscal year 2008 is sixty thousand dollars, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article ten be adopted as printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Uh, questions, comments from the public? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, to which shall be credited all fees and receipts paid to the town pursuant to Chapter sixteen of the Town of Oxford General Bylaws, Board of Health. Said funds may be expended by the Board of Selectmen for costs incurred for gas inspections as required by said bylaw, enforcement of said bylaw, and other expenses incurred in accordance with said bylaw. The total amount which may be expended from said fund is, in fiscal year 2008, is fifteen thousand dollars, or act thereon.
Moderator, I move that Article eleven be adopted as printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions or comments from the public? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriations account to the fire EMS fiscal year 2007 operational budget. Any vote under this article to the take, to take effect forthwith upon its adoption, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be transferred from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation account and appropriated to the fire EMS fiscal year 2007 operational budget, said action to take effect forthwith upon adoption.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions from the public? No questions, comments? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Opposed? If being none, um, um, uh, unanimous, passes unanimously. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from available funds to the Oxford Middle School Bleacher Account to replace the bleachers at the middle school. Any vote under this article to take effect forthwith upon its adoption, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of forty-four thousand, five hundred, forty-nine dollars and nineteen cents be transferred from Article three of the October two thousand and six town meeting, and the sum of forty-eight thousand, four hundred, fifty dollars and eighty-one cents be transferred from the high school construction account, and the total of said sums be appropriated to the middle school bleacher account, said action to take effect forthwith upon adoption.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Uh, questions, uh, comments from the public? Yes, sir. Please come up and... Give us your name and address.
Uh, Joe DeBisquale for Clarence Drive, Oxford. Uh, just one question, Mr. Moderator. I was wondering if the school committee could answer a question regarding the bleachers. Is there any way that these bleachers can be repaired before we go ahead and just buy new bleachers for the middle school? I haven't been up there, so I really don't know what they look like.
Does someone can address that for us?
I'm the president superintendent of schools.
Okay.
It requires a vote, but I'll speak, sir, as my resident, not a board, but I would move to do such.
Okay, so a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. We have had two different companies in to look at the bleachers to see if we could, uh, fix them. The bleachers have been there since nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, to find, uh, boards to replace or anything else, it's, it's easier and more cost-effective for us to just replace them.
Is that any cheek question?
Yes, it does. I mean, I haven't been up... I haven't been up to the middle school to look at the bleachers, and I wanted to make sure that they were, would be refurbished in any way before we just went ahead and spent more. Going to that, okay, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? All right, if being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article number fourteen, this requires a two-thirds vote, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money for the, from the Cecilia Solinsky Milet donation account to the stabilization, stabilization account, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be transferred from this Malinsky Milet donation account and appropriated to the stabilization account.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Uh, questions or comments from the public?
Explanation, please.
Yeah, someone, would someone like to speak on that?
Mr. Moderator? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is, represents a...
Joe, could you hold one second, please? Um, could I ask that, uh, it be okay if the town manager, who's not a resident at this point, uh, be allowed to speak on this? Is there a motion to allow that?
There's a motion.
Second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, the town, at, uh, built in addition to the library, a major change to the library, this Malinsky Milet Trust, uh, agreed to fund a children's room at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The trust did not have sufficient funds to simply make a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Town Meeting funded that by a transfer from stabilization with the understanding that money would come back to the trust as funds were available in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars a year when the money was available. This is, represents two payments from the trust to the donation account. It doesn't, money can't go directly from the trust to stabilization, has to go through Town Meeting, so when the, uh, the, the trust makes a donation, it goes into a don, donation account, a holding fund, and then Town Meeting has to vote to give it to stabilization.
Okay, does that answer the question? All right, any other, uh, questions or comments? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article number fifteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from available funds to the middle school boiler project account, or act thereon.
Moderator, I move that our, action on Article fifteen be postponed indefinitely.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We agree.
Okay, um, questions or comments from public?
Why?
Yes, sir. Please come up and... Just state your name and address.
There is one, the why, explanation. We had kept it, uh, put this article on the warrant because when we bid the middle school boiler replacement, came in over budget. We decided to rebid it, came in, uh, at a lower price, and we were able to get, uh, some funding, energy efficiency funding from Keyspan. So, we no longer need this, and just ask you to say you don't need it.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, any other comments or questions on that article? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously this way. Article number sixteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of one hundred, ten thousand dollars from available funds to the new police station account for architectural services, or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of nineteen thousand, five hundred, ten dollars and forty-three cents be transferred from Article five of the October two thousand town meeting, and the sum of nineteen thousand, seven hundred, six dollars be transferred from Article three of the October two thousand and six town meeting, and the sum of seventy thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents be transferred from free cash, and the total of said sums to be appropriated to the new police station account for architectural services, said action to take effect forthwith upon adoption.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend.
Questions? Yes. Okay, I'll get you next to you.
Cynthia and Almandine, eight, right on Road Drive, was to, uh, Oxford. Um, just want to know why, um, when it, when that kind of money, when you knock down the Johnson Building, which was probably better off rehabbing than knocking down, and keeping the municipalities in the center of town, um, also, I mean, is there that much crime that we need a bigger police station?
Would you like to speak on that, Chief?
Good evening. Charles Norris, Country Lane, here, your police chief. And to answer the question, the Jawsen School is one of two sites, two school buildings that we looked at as possible conversion to a police facility. And when looked at by not only the Police Station Study Committee, which I served on, as well as architectural firms, they were just not cost-effective to rehabbing to what's needed for a modern police facility. We looked at, one of the things we looked at with the Jawsen School site as well, in particular, was the fact that we'd be utilizing residential streets coming to and from the police station and especially in times of emergency, responding to emergencies. And if possible, we wanted to stay away from responding to emergencies from residential neighborhoods, which we would have been doing either through Maple Road or Rossin Ave. So we looked at that, but the primary function for not going strongly for the Jawsen School building was the fact that the cost to rehab it, convert it, re-landscaped the area would not be cost-effective to do that. Moderator? The money, the $110,000 collective total that we're putting together tonight and we're asking for is to design a facility, design a building of what the new police station would look like. It would have some layouts, whatever. The plans would be up to the point of building. You couldn't build it from the plans that we're doing for this $110,000. But it would give to you, the public and residents of Oxford, a clear picture of what you would be voting on. Just like you don't buy your car unless you go look at it. You don't build a house until you look at some plans and spend the money. We want to design it, lay it out the way that meets the current codes and regulations both for the town, but for the state, as well as for the country, understanding the police stations and look at that. We're well aware that we're not going to be building a Cadillac. We're not going to be building the top-of-the-line police station. We realize that money is not unlimited. So certainly, we're looking forward to going towards a building that is cost-effective, meets the needs of the police department today in 10 years, in 20 years, and possibly 30 years down the road. And so the funding that we're asking for tonight is to go forward and do that, to hire an architectural firm to design it so we can come back to a future Town Meeting and ask for whatever amount of dollars it works out to be to build the facility itself. The building we're in now was built in 1971. It has served the town very well for the past 36 years. But when that building was built, there was only seven full-time police officers in the town. And we've changed that point. We're 19 full-time officers. We provide your communication service, emergency services, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anybody who's been in there, you see that you can't walk down the hallway without bumping into somebody. And once you walk in the main lobby, there's a bench there, which I refer to as the principal bench. Many of us only wait for that. From good occasions and occurrences. But the hallway's not there. The architect, we've had an architect look in the building now and pointed out some of the faults. One of the faults is that it's not compliant with the Maryland Disbuilding Act at this point in time. The doorways are not sufficient to do that. The building was built very soundly, securely, and we've certainly gotten our money's worth out of it over the past 36 years. But the way it was built, we can't move those interior walls without basically having to demolish the whole building and leave nothing but a shell. So we've looked at it very closely. The consensus of opinion is that we can't refit that building and the interior layout of it to meet the modern needs and standards for a modern police facility. So I'd ask for your support for the $110,000 to put together a set of drawings and plans to come back to a future Town Meeting and hopefully to approve the project we move forward. You remember, we started this project back in 1998, the Town Meeting back then, when we started the Study Committee National Monies and we continue to spend some of those monies to get to where we are tonight. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Please state your name and address.
Don Cooney, Old Oxford. I just want to understand, make sure I understand it correctly. This $110,000 is for planning with drawings and you'll be back at a future date to ask for more money for drawings that we're going to be able to build with? Is that correct?
The quick answer is yes. You could not build a facility that will be in the millions of dollars for $110,000 worth of plans and architectural services. It's going to be much more than that. But when we come back and ask for a dollar figure to build the building, in that dollar figure will also include the cost for architectural services to design the building.
While the chief was standing, could I ask
Yes. Come on up, please. Want to hang in there, chief?
Sure.
Name's Larry Farley, Hope Ave, Oxford. I guess my question is, for the $110,000, I don't have a problem with it. Would it take six acres for this particular building? How many acres? In other words, whoever's going to design the building will have to design it for a piece of property. There's a lot of money figures in a piece of property. Half of the project would be just a piece of property. And $110,000, if you were to design a building, I would think you would have to know where you're going to put the building. I know you don't know that, but we'd have to get the money to you to at least get started, but I don't know if you would be doing anything like to the next Town Meeting. I think it's too early. But I don't have a problem giving you the $110,000 because I know it's going to cost a lot more. But there's a lot of other things that have to be looked at first.
One of the tasks of the building, Police Station Building Study Committee, was to look at existing buildings, existing sites, and potential sites that may be out there. As you heard Mr. Madison in his report at the beginning of the meeting say, we've all ended up, no matter how many times we've gone away from it, we come back to the piece of property of 503 Main Street, located right up as we stand here, to the north of the middle school. It's a piece of property that was bought by the town a number of years ago. It still is owned by the town. It's thought at that time when it was purchased was to possibly put a police station site there. We've looked at it. Could a police station fit on that site? The answer is yes. We would, unless something comes along and somewhere a piece of property falls out and then is a much superior site and the cost is appropriate, we probably will design a building to fit on that site. If for some reason it would turn out that the architect who starts the design process says it won't fit there and it's not a good fit, then obviously, we'd take the proper steps, steps to look somewhere else. But right now, we would probably borrowing something coming out of the Blue Sky design for that site out there.
So I've been saying, you had your hand up.
I would just like to add a little bit, a little bit to the need. And I think it's important that we understand that there is a definite need for a new police station in town of Oxford. We have sat back, or I should say, the police department over the past 37 years, have sat back and watched all other departments in the community have new buildings put forward for their use. We've seen the school department get three brand-new schools during that 36-year period. As a matter of fact, one of the schools, the middle school that we use now, which was a former high school, was built a year and a half before the police station was. And we're not, no longer using that as a school, as a high school. We're using it as a middle school. The fire department has had two fire stations built in those 36 years. The senior center has a brand-new building that was built in 1993. The highway department has a building that was built on Cheltenham Street, I believe 10 years ago. So all other departments have benefited while the police department has sat back. Now, that building was built in 1970. And that building was built to house the staffing at that time, at the 1968, 69 staffing level, which was eight police officers and employees. Obviously, we all know how this town has grown and what the needs are for the police department and other departments over those 36 years. We have a building that was constructed on a postage-stamped lot. It has no room for expansion. It's a beautiful-looking building. As you ride by Route 12, you'll see a beautiful building with a lot of roof. But that's it, all roof. It's on a cement slab. The building, the rooms are divided by cement blocks. A garage has been converted into office space. The attic has been converted for storage. There is no means of driving a prisoner into a booking area that is required by police departments now. So the lot unit does not meet the APA standards anymore. There's a lot of reasons why we have to do it. So this is going to be a long process and you have to understand that this is the first step forward in that process. But I think it's important that you understand that the need is there. And if you don't believe the need is there, please, for doubt, call chief. Make an appointment to walk through the building and have him show you what they've done and how they're utilizing the limited space that they have, the number of employees that they now house. So I urge you to support this. This is only the beginning, as I said, and a long process. We'll have to come back before you to ask you for the additional funding that will be needed to carry through on these plans. And let's not kid ourselves, ladies and gentlemen. This is going to be a costly endeavor. We know what it'd cost to build this building and other school buildings and other department buildings in this community. So we're probably talking anything in the vicinity of $4 to $6 million. That's what you're going to be looking for, so keep that in the back of your mind. We're going to have to come back here and we're going to have to address that issue once these plans have been established. So I urge you to support this as the first step and hopefully you'll all have an understanding before we come here and ask you for that dollar amount, probably this far. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Sackman Cooney.
Thank you. Not to be redundant or stuffy and sad, but I do just have one question for the chief noise on this. As we know, we're talking, we talk about millions of dollars. And I believe money is well-spent. Money that I do believe should be spent now to start the planning process because we see the price of construction. If we keep waiting and postponing this, the costs are going to skyrocket. But we hear of this great building that happened that was built 37 years ago and structurally sound. And my question for the chief, you just explained, is what's being done as part, when we get through the architecture with these plans, to show that the lot that we use, the building that is produced on this lot, is able to grow into the future? Who would have known about 37 years ago about NITRAS and task force or other compliances that is required every day through law enforcement? So, Chief Norris, just tell us on, if there is a plan or how this lot or this $110,000, is it the intention of this that the building could be eventually expanded as need be down the road? So it's not going to be a one-time, a one-shot deal, come back and say, what are we going to do now? But what's the next step? If we have to, at future Town Meetings, in the top of 30 years down the road, again, come back and expand?
Moderator? For the new facility, and having dealt with an architectural firm, representative is here in the audience tonight, is a non-voter. We've looked at doing that. We originally thought of ideally a one-story building, but we thought, and my own personal thoughts and objections, also in consultation with the architect, is a two-story building would be more effective. We would not necessarily have to build it out from day one. It allows perhaps some space to expand in the future. If we did not build it out, it would limit on the second floor from day one. It also gives us a building, our thought is a building that would have a basement and the basement would obviously have the normal things that you have in the basement, like you do in any building, a commercial building. But also would give us space to build out again in the future, to expand as the department, the town continues to go in the future. So certainly, our thoughts are along that line. We want to make sure that we don't make a mistake that some communities might have made in the past is to build a police facility for today. And we want to make sure that when we build the next one, that it will last for that day and for the next decade, and possibly two other decades down the road. And to do that, certainly that's why we utilize architects who know the profession, who are able to get the requirements from across the country and standards for law enforcement across the country so we can build it to do that for today and tomorrow. Things have changed. And certainly, when the police station was built in 1970, '71 and was moved in there, the thought was that it would be able to be expanded upon. But unfortunately, in that past 36-plus years, things have changed and we can't move those interior walls like it might have been easier to do when the person initially thought. Certainly, any building that's built today would be built with the ability to expand either vertically and vertically even to the second floor or into the basement area.
Thank you, moderator. We have a gentleman who would like to have a remote microphone. Mr. Granger, if you'd be so kind. Down up in front here. Sir, could you raise your hand, please?
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of quick questions. I know there was a board that was put together
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Christopher Boucher, 16, in Reebok, out here in Oxford. I know there was a committee put together to assess the cost and whatnot for the police station and it was said about Cheltenham. I know that the state police just put in barracks in Millbury for, you know, $110,000. I remember when they did the high school, they came back and said, well, we're plumbing, blah, 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 $70,000. Now we need an additional $70,000. I don't know if we could use the plans that they have already had. Like, we can borrow the plans from the state, Massachusetts, that built the new one in Millbury, kind of go against, you know, kind of use their plans. I don't know what the, what the total what the committee came up with as far as the overall total how they got to the $110,000.
Chief, could you speak to that? I think what you're asking, was there an estimate given and what's included in it? Have they worked it out at the towns?
Looked at other towns, yeah, because I know that we spoke this evening of a potential site here on Main Street. But I know as the town grows that there'll be more kids and we'll need more fields for soccer and maybe they might be a better idea, find a different spot before we spend the $110,000. You know, maybe it's better to have eight acres instead of five acres, you know, with public safety being number one. That comes first, first and foremost, I believe. You know, and with the technology and the building being properly wired for computers and safety and I just think that I was wondering how they came up with $110,000.
Chief?
Moderator. The figure of $110,000 for architectural services is based upon a bid that was put out to approximately 17 architectural firms that submitted packets, found packets similar to something like this might be. And they had drawings and pictures and they listed their expertise. and pictures, and they listed their expertise and experience in designing buildings, both commercial buildings as well as public safety buildings. There was a designer selection committee that was appointed by the town manager, and that designer selection committee, which I was a part of, and Mr. Mast was a part of. We sat on that, and we reviewed the proposals and the qualifications submitted by various architectural firms, and we went through there, and as a committee, we went through and we selected, Mr. Himmelberg was also on there too, so I know slightly, but we went through there and we reviewed all the proposals submitted by the architectural firms. We looked for a firm that we felt was a good fit to the town of Oxford. We knew that we were not going to be building a palatial-type police station with grand entryways. We needed something that was going to be functional, that was going to be warming, that was going to be receptive to use residents of the community. You mentioned about state police facilities. State police and local police, we operate very much differently. Our interaction with our community at large is very differently than it is what a state police barracks does with their, with their services they provide. We are much more hands-on, face-to-face with user residents of town. We're a facility that we welcome people to come in, either register complaints or offer praise or offer suggestions. So when we look at all those facilities, we look at the seventeen different architectural firms that submitted proposals to forward plans or bidding to sell their services and us to hire their services to design a police station, we came up with a firm, and the town manager negotiated a contract fee with the firm, with the firm that we selected, the committee selected, and that hundred and ten thousand dollars represents the negotiated contract.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain. Anyone else?
Second.
Okay. Everyone in favor of moving the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carries by majority. I'll, I'll ask for the vote now. All in favor of Article Number Sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries your hands. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Forty of the General Bylaws of the Town of Oxford, Dog Restraint and Regulation by deleting from Section Four Procedure Following Impounded. Item Two, redemption of impounded dogs and replacing it with the following and act thereon. Two, redemption of impounded dogs. The owner or keeper of any dog impounded under the provision of the bylaw may redeem such dog provided he first reimburses the dog officer for his expenses at the rate of not more than twenty-five dollars for his initial handling of such dog, plus ten dollars for each day or portion thereof, that he has confined such dog and be procures from the town clerk a license and tag for any such dog that is not licensed.
And we'll, Mr. Moderator, I hope that Article Seventeen, the adopted, is printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee.
We recommend.
Discussion. Any questions? Okay, if they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries your hands. Article Number Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Sixty-One of the General Bylaws of the Town of Oxford, Regulations Pertaining to Cats by deleting from Section Four Impoundment, Item A, and replacing it with the following by act thereon. A, reimburses the annual control officer for his expenses at a rate of not more than twenty-five dollars for his initial handling of said cat, plus ten dollars for each day or portion thereof, that he has confined such cat and-
Mr. Moderator, I hope that Article Eighteen, the adopted, is printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Recommend.
Questions from the public? I'll take that as no questions. Any other comments? If they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries your hands. Article Number Nineteen, this requires a two-thirds vote, this article. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, transfer from available funds or issue notes and/or bonds and appropriate a sum of money for constructing sanitary sewers in Beverly Street, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I hope that the town authorize the town treasurer with the consent of the Board of Selectmen to borrow two hundred thousand dollars under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Sections Seven and Eight, or any other enabling authority to issue a note or notes and/or bond or bond and appropriate said sum for the construction of sanitary sewers and aftertuneses in Beverly Street according, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee. Questions from the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Recommendation of the Planning Board.
We recommend.
Questions from the public? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name and address.
Tom Solow, Chestnut Hill, Vice Chairman of the North Oxford Sewer Study Commission. I just wanted to point out that the amount of money that we just put out there to raise will be recouped through the next two articles, provided they pass through betterments that only the folks that benefit from this are going to pay for it. Does that make sense? Yeah, right go.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Also, Article Twenty-One then deals with deferments of the veteran payments based on age and income restrictions.
Okay. We'll be discussing that next.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Moderator, as you recognize, I just want to take the opportunity to thank your committee. It was a tremendous amount of work that went into this. They went door-to-door to ask if the residents were in support of this in all these neighborhoods. If you remember, there was a similar article voted on, voted down at town meeting in years past because there was not a consensus, but this committee has done hours upon hours of work. I don't know if any of you caught the PowerPoint presentation that they put on in front of the Board of Selectmen, which was televised. It was very impressive. They've done their homework, and I want, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, in those neighborhoods, I want to thank you because it's certainly a tremendous draw, a tremendous amount of time.
I'm the only person talking tonight. We'd rather have two other members of the committee here tonight, Christopher Lancy and Robert Parker, that represent the hard work as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All comments being said, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Can I see a raise, a raising of hands? All in favor, people, please raise your hand. Okay. Opposed? Okay. Carries by two-thirds. Article Number Twenty-One, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter Eighty, Section Thirteen-B, that would allow the deferral of betterment payments for property owners who meet certain age and income restrictions or act thereon.
Moderator, Article Twenty?
Oh, Twenty, I'm sorry. Article Twenty, I'll read that over again. Sorry. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to assess betterments through the sewer enterprise fund to recover one hundred percent of the project cost for the installation of sanitary sewers in Beverly Street. Set betterments to be made in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter Eighty-three, Section Fifteen, using a uniform method or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I hope that Article Twenty, the adopted, is printed.
Second. Finance recommends.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee, yes. Recommendation of the Planning Board. Questions from the public? If they're being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries your hands. Article Twenty-One.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Point of order, I have a challenge to form. I've seen question, people moving out.
Okay. Our checkers are Julian Summers, Merck DeSantis, Donald-
Merck Desatell.
Merck Desatell. Donald Strager, Mike Damasi, Alice Walker, Vivian DuBois. And at this point, those people I'd like to have you stand, and the town clerk, so where you went. Please come forward.
Could you please explain what the ramifications are here?
Certainly. What is being challenged here is a quorum, and at any point during a town meeting, if we have a quorum challenge or we do not need a quorum, we cannot conduct any further town business. So what I've done is, in order to get an accurate count, we have designated checkers that we're swearing into office here, and these people will actually make account of people that are registered voters in present, to confirm that we have the required amount, which is two percent of the registered voters from our last annual town meeting. And in the case of this meeting, that is a hundred and sixty-seven voters, I believe. I'll confirm that is seven. Yes, it is, a hundred and sixty-seven voters. We're down by eight right now. Well, we've got a couple of options. I don't know if anyone's interested in calling people, see if we can get eight people here so we can finish our business this evening, or our alternative is to adjourn to another meeting, or continue the meeting. So those are our only two options. We need eight people, so I don't know where we're going to get them.
I would make a motion that we continue the town meeting during the second-
Second.
-to a specific night. We have, we have selected some alternative dates. I know with the schools, I'd yield to the town clerk.
How about tomorrow night, get it over with?
My motion to be adjourned, excuse me, continue the town meeting to tomorrow evening at seven P.M.
Okay. Discussion on that? Uh, there's no rule to that, no. We can continue the meeting tomorrow. We'll put it on the table, we'll put it- Well, I think, well, let's hope now, let's hope everybody brings an extra person.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I was, we need to coordinate this with the schools as well. I mean, we can't just pick a date. I know that tomorrow night was a good day, and I'm hearing that it's probably not going to be a forum tomorrow night, and we need some time to rustle some feathers to have a forum. So that's why I'd ask the superintendent of schools what date would work, because I think it is a good point to say we're not going to have a forum tomorrow night if we don't have one tonight without some advertising.
If you could, two seconds, I could, I could check the calendar and then bring it off.
Is that-
I'll tell my motion until- Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
If I could, I'd like to resurrect my motion to be that we convene this meeting on May seventh, which is Monday. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that? Anyone? Comments? Okay, if they're being done, I'll, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor? Please raise your hands. It's the only thing you can do without a quorum.
You can vote.
So we're okay making a vote here? Please, all in favor, raise their hands. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody that you've come in tonight to help us receive this quorum. Okay, good evening, and welcome to the Oxford Gayville Town Meeting. My name is Martin Werdadant, and I'm your moderator. I'm going to call this meeting to a halt. If anyone has any cell phones on, please shut them off so that we're not interrupted. And I'd also like to point out, first and foremost, emergency accesses in case of a problem here. You have the doors that you came in from that direction, and you also have two doors off of the stage here you can exit from over here. Okay, at this point, I'd ask everybody to stand and say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. At this point, I'd like to, over, this is obviously our continuation of town meeting from last week, and in that town meeting, we had already addressed and voted on twenty of the twenty-seven articles. This evening, we'll be starting with Article Twenty-One, and before we do that, I'm going to just introduce people that are of your significance, your town officials, so to speak. And we have our, our town clerk, assistant town clerk, we have our selectmen up here, our town manager, our accounting department in the back over here. Down to the left, we have the Finance Committee. In the center, we have the School Committee, and to our right over here, we have the Planning Board. Any non-voters or non-registered voters here this evening should be sitting in this area in, to my right, first up of three rows. Okay. You should have all either already- You should have all either already had or received packets upon entering. So for the people that haven't been here, there's two or three packets that were up on the table out front. And for the people that were already here, I presume that you have a listing of the articles, an explanation of the articles and so forth, budget or not.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I may, just before we commence with the articles, I just wanna take a brief moment and thank everybody in this room who took the time to come back out. It's a very important meeting and very important that we wrap up this process. The fact that we're here tonight means that we don't have to try to do this again. And it does cost the town approximately $3,000 to reconvene this evening. So you can well imagine if we were going out into the summer, how much more difficult it would have been to get a quorum and to keep trying. So I want to thank you all for taking time out of your schedule to be here. I know everybody's super busy during the week and hopefully we can get this done tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Jim. I'd just like to set a couple of procedural guidelines for the meeting, as I did last week. And those will include all questions and comments need to be made through the chair for organizational reasons. When requesting to speak, you need to raise your hand or you won't be recognized. I will, once recognized, please come down to the microphone up front here. State your name, your address, and then you're able to make your comments and questions. Each person is allowed a couple per article. After that, our bylaws prohibit the speaker from speaking more than twice. Anybody who's physically unable to come down to the microphone will supply a microphone to you in your seat. Please don't abuse this privilege because it's something in order to reach out to the handicapped or for accessibility. So that being said, I'm gonna move and read the article that we were on. And that would be Article Number 21. "To see if the town will vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 80, Section 15d, that would allow the deferral of benefit payments or property owners who meet certain age and income restrictions are act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 21 be adopted and printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation also of the Planning Board, in this case.
We recommend.
Recommended. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Please come down and state your name and address and pause over here.
Joe DiMascuali for Cleric Drive. Mr. Moderator, if I may, through you. Looking at this article and reading it, it says here for people that are 65 years or older and an income guideline is under $20,000 per year. I happened to mention it to Selectman Casey. And I was wondering if anybody can answer. Is this gonna be etched in stone? Is there anything for those who are on disability, who are on a fixed income that can qualify for this as well? Or is it just what it states here?
Someone would like to address that? Yes, and I'd like to point out that Mr. Zaneski, our town manager, acting town manager, is not a resident, so I'll ask that he be approved to speak. Is there a motion to allow him to speak?
Second.
And any discussion on that? Being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Zaneski?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To answer the questioner's question, the provision of law that allows for deferral is very specific. And the only, in fact, it makes reference to another section of law which specifies the 65 years of age they have to have lived in their home in these five years. They have to have lived in Massachusetts for at least 10 years and the salary. So it's very restrictive, but it is something. So to answer the question, no. It's gonna be limited to what is in the law.
Can I answer a question?
He isn't done, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried by two-thirds. Actually, this was a simple majority. Motion carries. This next article, I'm going to step down on. This is an article related to a creation of a charter review committee. And I was on the past charter review committee, so I'm gonna step down while the deputy moderator moderates this article. I'll read Article 22. "To see if the town will vote to establish a charter review committee with an equal number of members to be appointed, each by the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and the Town Moderator. The same officials to fill any vacancies that may occur among their appointees. And that said, committee be authorized and directed to review the town charter relative to the advisability of revision or task or amendment to report their findings and recommendations for future town meetings. And to accomplish this task raised by taxation and transferred from available funds an appropriated sum of money for the fiscal year 2008 for the Board of Selectmen account for clerical support or act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town establish a charter review committee to be made up of nine members, three to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, three to be appointed by the Town Manager, and three to be appointed by the Town Moderator. The same officials to fill any vacancies that may occur among their appointees. That said committee be authorized and directed to review the town charter relative to the advisability of revision or amendment. Said authorization will expire at the close of the fall 2008 special town meeting warrant. That said committee shall report their findings and recommendations in the form of an article or articles to be included on the warrant for the fall 2008 special town meeting. And that the sum of $4,000 be transferred from free cash to the fiscal year 2008 Board of Selectmen account for clerical support for said committee."
Second.
Recommendations of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not recommend.
Open for comments? Is there any comments, Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee, when we met on this year... The Finance Committee took this up in one of their sessions as when we went over the budget and the warrant. We asked at that time if there was any reason for this. Nobody in the room had, could told us or were able to tell us why this was required. If we had an explanation at the time we were reviewing it, we may have considered it differently.
Thank you. Other comments, Board of Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the Finance Committee, when it was brought up, it was discussed in open session at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen as to what we were looking for. As many of you know, this town is going through a process right now that we haven't gone through in 30 years. And that's appointing a town manager. A task like that involved us having to advertise nationally for a position that we, as a board, understand should be filled locally with somebody who's familiar with Massachusetts law. That's just one of the reasons we brought it up. Another, if you look at the town's master plan, somewhere in there, there's a provision where every 20 years, 25 years, it has to be revised. Yet our charter, in this dynamic, changing times in which we live, has no provision to have it relooked at or revamped. So it has been 10 years since it's been looked at. A decades-long time. There's been a lot of changes over the past decade that we need to incorporate into the charter as it exists. But we don't have the authority to do so. That authority lies with you. So of course, we're asking that you support this measure. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or discussion? Madam Chair and Selectmen?
Just a few other factual points as well. Some may know and some may not. We've had some discussions with the town clerk about this. Ms. Kelly, who is probably the most qualified expert to speak on charters, given the fact that she works with clerks throughout the Commonwealth in 351 cities and states. And I'm not saying she has a position on this one way or another, but many towns have a provision within their charter that mandates review every five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever the period may be, for this exact reason. Because the reality of it is for our town is our charter is our constitution. We all know we follow the United States Constitution nationally. Well, the charter is our hometown constitution. And when you look at the United States Constitution, that document has been changed and amended 27 times since its ratification in 1789 and most recently in 1992 with the 27th Amendment. So it's a document that if we wanted to remain relevant to be a living and breathing constitution for the town, if you will, we have to take a look at it. And if you look at the way that the article is worded, there's no politics, there's no fun and games, there's no behind-the-scenes maneuvering going on. You've got three different individuals or one board appointing the moderator, the town manager, and the board of selectmen, each selecting three people at large from the town to serve. So it's going to be a wholesome body that's gonna take a look at our constitution and make recommendations. And that's all they'll be. And those recommendations will have to come back before you and be adopted at town meeting after we've fully vetted those suggestions. So I think it's a healthy move for the town. There's a request for a $4,000 budget. I think that that's a reasonable amount for the committee to do their work and to have a clerk. So I would urge you, it's a good move to support this article. Thank you.
Are there any more comments, discussion?
I'm Cindy Babbagie. I live at 30 Thiemmont Drive. And this is not from the board. This is just as a citizen registered voter of Oxford. But as I understand it, over the last few years, there've been two committees already. And that the only thing that they came up with the last one is that they wanted to change a he to he slash she, which seems like a waste of everybody's energy and time on the charter committee. So if there was a particular issue that you would like to have them look at, and that's what I'd like to know. If it's a general, let the committee do what they want. I don't, how do you, I know that their act would be as lost as the other two that have already...
I just, I don't know if that question's directed towards me. I wouldn't say that the other committees were lost. They made recommendations. There were minor changes. I don't think that that in any way negates the necessity to take a look at the document. I think Selectman LaMouton pointed out a very important issue is the Town Manager position. And a good chance that we'll have to fill that sometime within the next 10 years. And every time we have to advertise nationally, maybe we'll put a dollar on it because people seem to connect with that. When you have to advertise nationally, it's a couple thousand dollars anyway. And that's being conservative. So to take a look at it, even if you make that one change, you're gonna be saving the town some money. And it makes sense because you want somebody from the Commonwealth. You don't want to be mandated to look nationally, bring somebody in from San Diego who doesn't know a lick about Massachusetts laws. So that would be one example. And quite frankly, I think that historically, you're better to look at a document like this when there is no fueled agenda or ambition or hot-button issue as a reason to change it. Because that's when cashews cloud what normally is sound judgment. So it's a period of calm and a period of reflection that this committee can look at this document and make any recommended changes that they need to make. Quite frankly, I don't see any downside to it. And if you have nine individuals who want to give up their time to serve on a volunteer committee, I would never see that as a waste of time.
Are there any more questions or comments on this article?
Move the article.
Seconded.
I will call for a vote then. No more comments or questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed as by a majority vote. Next article, turn back over to the moderator.
Point of order?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Aye.
Main motion?
Make the motion. Make the main motion. Move the motion. Second. Move to the next article.
Mr. Moderator, was that the vote for?
We only voted to move the question, I believe. Now we have to vote on the article itself.
I will add the main motion to the article.
Then moved and seconded?
Moved and seconded. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next article. Okay, we'll move on to Article Number 23. "See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land located at 72 Southridge Road, Route 20, now formerly owned by Edmund and Doris Butler. Accessory map 10A, parcel V19. A plan of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk or act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept for general municipal purposes a gift of land located at 72 Southridge Street, Route 20, now formerly owned by Edmund and Doris Butler, described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 3923, page 198, containing 0.2 acres more or less.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
We defer to the Planning Board.
Recommendation of the Planning Board?
We recommend.
Discussion? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried by two-thirds. Article Number 24. "See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land on Route 20, now formerly owned by PSD Developers, Inc., accessory map 10A, parcel A13, a plan of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk or act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept for general municipal purposes a gift of land on Route 20, now formerly owned by PSD Developers, Inc., described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 33312, page 327, containing 1.51 acres more or less.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
We defer to the Planning Board.
Recommendation of the Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends.
Discussion? Being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Article Number 25. "See if the town will vote to amend the votes taken on Article 14, 15, and 16 at the October 11, 2006 special town meeting to grant the Board of Selectmen the authority to accept a fee interest in Minuteman Lane, Monument Drive, and History Lane, in addition to the authority to accept roadway easements and drainage easements previously voted at the October 11, 2006 special town meeting or act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 25 be adopted and printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Referring to the Planning Board.
Recommendation of the Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends.
Discussion? If being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. On Articles 26 and 27, I'm also gonna step down in order to alleviate the appearance of conflict of interest. I also serve as the chairman of the zoning Board of Appeals. So I'm gonna let the deputy moderator take care of these questions. They deal with zoning changes. I'll read Article 26. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning map by including in the light industrial LI district land located off Nobre Road, now formerly owned by Robert W. Warman. Accessory map number 13, parcel C07.01, a plan of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk or act thereon."
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 26 be adopted and printed.
Second.
Recommendations of the Finance Committee?
We defer to the Planning Board.
Recommendations of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board does not recommend.
Open to the discussion? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ruby Warman Pollock. I live at 117 Millbury Road. I'd like to explain this article. In 1977, my husband and I purchased 51 acres of light industrial land on the east and west side of Millbury Road. This parcel in question tonight was included in this purchase. The goal in 1977 was to relocate our second-generation machine shop to Oxford and to build on this site. In 1980, we built a personal home on this site, on this land. In 1996, we gave our daughter four acres, and she built her home. So we've all moved to Oxford, and now we want to build a machine shop on this land with our son at the helm. Somehow, this parcel was rezoned around 1987 from light industrial to residential. We could have built the third-generation machine shop across the street at any time because this land remains zoned light industrial. We met with Tech Review and discussed our options. Robert Warman suggested this parcel, and Tech Review supported that this would be an appropriate site. So we applied to rezone this land back to light industrial. We have invested the last year into making this happen. We feel strongly that this is a more appropriate site because it is barely visible from Millbury Road. It is about 20 feet below the road level. It has wetlands in the back, a butt's light industrial land in the back, and to the right it has major power lines. We have been told that if this does not pass tonight, we would have to wait two years. We are unable to wait another two years, and we'll build a machine shop across the street from this parcel, and it will overlook Millbury Road. This is not what we want to do. I assure you, we want it to aesthetically fit in the neighborhood. No resident or rebutter has objected to this zoning change. We care about Main Millbury Road and our neighborhood. This was an ideal site in 1977, and it's still an ideal site today. Please support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Discussion?
Yes. Could you ask the Planning Board to please explain their reason for denying?
Uh, thank you.
That the zoning board appealed?
If the zoning board appealed or the Planning Board either, give it, explain their position.
Mr. Moderator, I can do so, and that's how it is.
We have a gentleman who's not a town resident, we have a motion to allow him to speak. Planner. Vote. All in favor, say yes. All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Scanlon. I'm the acting town planner. When the Planning Board looked at this issue, it found that the neighborhood is primarily residential in nature. And in looking at zoning changes, it's important to look at the long-term perspective of what rezoning a piece of property might mean. And rezoning this to light industry didn't seem to be the right thing to do for this particular neighborhood, because there are many uses that are committed to the light industrial district. It might have a negative impact on the neighborhood in the long term.
Are there any other additional gentlemen over here, please?
Hi, my name is Glenn Warman, 116 Fennel Hill Road. That's exactly why we're here tonight. We're just concerned with the neighborhood. I mean, we could have put it across the street. We chose to wait and put the project off for another year. We're going to move the machine shop. I mean, that's what our plan was 30 years ago. Right now, across the street is zoned light industrial, and we feel across the road would be the best site today to put a machine shop. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments?
Matters of zoning can be quite tricky. I listened into the people who are petitioning for this zone change, and they spoke on behalf of all of their neighbors. Their neighbors have been apprised of the situation, the folks who currently live on Millbury Road. Now, I listen to Bill, and Bill, I understand what you're saying. You have to think of the future. However, anybody who moves into that neighborhood after this machine shop is built is going to be moving into a neighborhood where there's an existing machine shop. It's the current people who live there, the current neighborhood, that has no problem. Glenn, I have talked with you. I know your operation. He runs a good operation. He's a low-impact type industry. He's not going to be killing the neighborhood with traffic. He's not gonna be doing anything of the likes. You'll still have to go before our Planning Board to make sure that you comply with all of the rules of building on that property anyway. So the hope tonight allows the zone change to allow him to go forward with the next step. And in the future, while it holds, who knows? But again, the neighbors who currently live there, the ones who don't want to be impacted, have no problems with it. So I'll be supporting you, Glenn.
Are there any other additional comments or opinions? And move the question for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It was by a majority. I should mention this is a two-thirds vote, and it passes by one of the two-thirds. I'll read Article 27. "See If The Town Will Vote To Amend The Oxford Zoning Map By Changing The Zoning From Suburban District R2, Light Industrial District L.I. To The Land Ordered By Main Street, Route 12 To The North, French River To The South, Fairbottom Road To The West, And The Eastern Boundary Of 627 Main Street, Accessor's Map 11B, Parcel A07 To The East, A Plan Of Which Is On File In The Office Of The Town Clerk Or Act Thereon."
Moderator, I move that Article 27 be adopted and printed.
Second.
Recommendation of the Planning Board? Excuse me, Finance Committee? Recommendation of the Planning Board?
We recommend.
Call for discussion? Opinions? If being none, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a two-thirds vote, and it passes unanimously.
I'd just like to thank the population for coming to the meeting this evening. We concluded our annual town meeting for the year 2007. 27 articles were on this agenda, and we passed them all. Many of them were passed unanimously, some by two-thirds vote, some by majority. So I thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce our Madam Chairman, Chairman of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to congratulate the citizens of the town for coming out. We had to reconvene this meeting to get all the articles passed, and we're so fortunate that we were able to get a quorum tonight. I know people took time out of their busy schedules to be here, so I want to thank them for coming out. And I want to congratulate the moderator on a fine first annual town meeting. He did a great job, and he got to do it twice. So thanks again for coming out, and we'll see you in October.